All the meeting door. You seen him evidence.
Where we gonna have the bell? You'll have to bring the.
Yeah, for evidence of.
The county board of supervisors, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three notice and agenda was posted in the government center building in two places posted on county website on January sixth, twenty twenty-three, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of January ninth, twenty twenty-three, with the publication date of January twelfth. In addition, on Friday, January sixth, twenty twenty-three, at five ten P. M., the office of the county clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail.
Sir. How's that sound for evidence?
Yes, he's over here.
Where are you? Oh, you didn't.
Second one.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is appropriate notice.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Brad Olson for a.
You want to do the roll call first, Jay?
Before roll call?
Do the roll call first.
Yeah, we did the.
No.
I got you. I got you checked at the roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Warren.
Here.
Ryan Wood.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Barbara McAfee.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lalié Prey.
She's excused if she isn't on.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
C. J. Simmons.
Here.
And John Bonn.
Okay.
Fourteen out of fifteen.
I'm gonna recognize Brad Olson again.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. So I asked chairman before the meeting if if after the pledge of allegiance, we could have a moment of silence to honor that. I seen sixty-four police officers were killed in the line of duty last year, along with another three hundred and thirty-one injured, just to honor the men and women who've lost their lives protecting us in the United States.
Awesome.
Okay, and we will now see to the pledge of allegiance to be followed by approximately a minute of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion on the agenda.
Nope. Please. I'm gonna I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda, but we're gonna pull under number six, resolution D. zero three twenty-three. To to go back.
Go back.
To the.
Remand back to the township.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor of that motion as it stands, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone say aye? Okay, now we need a motion on the matters. Oh, we got the motion on the matters of consent. With that motion in mind, and twenty-three remanded back to the city, the or the township, the the agenda has been approved. There any public comments? What I do know.
If number say, I'll make a motion to adopt a consent agenda.
You did with that.
No, I did. I just, no, I just, that was the agenda as all.
I'll second it.
And I've had a motion that's made and seconded to adopt the agenda.
The consent agenda.
The consent agenda with remove the resolution three twenty-three.
Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. We proceed. The proposed resolution. Where does four twenty-three was approved by the committee, however, it was not signed. So with that in mind, I need a motion to approve resolution four twenty-three.
So move.
Move by Dan.
Second.
Second by who? Oh, Steve.
Four twenty-three.
Four twenty-three.
Um, well, there's a spelling error in it. That has to be fixed. Can you, should we do that?
Uh.
Grabners there, we can.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So for a point of order, do we need two-thirds to bring it because it isn't signed in March ahead of time?
It hasn't gone to a committee.
It has.
Through committee, it's gone.
It just didn't get signed in record. It was approved in record, just nobody signed.
See in the minutes of approval.
It would have been approved at the general government, the agenda for.
They were unanimous.
General government meeting.
Yeah.
Just our rules of orders is usually our, these have to be signed.
Can we sign it here at the meeting? I think what we've done.
I would think so.
I'll sign it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I pose same sign. Presentations. Works.
Adam Gurk, do we give him these lights at all?
Yeah.
We've been driving too much.
He needs a man.
Shut them almost right off. It was hard. Little more.
Good.
Somehow.
You still there?
Right.
Bring a stick in a bit.
Good evening, everyone. Don't ask me to present on analytics on highway. And the thing, two things I picked were snow and ice control. Next slide, Claire. So snow and ice control highway construction. Look at a couple of the data. We collect a lot of data at highway. So next slide. Snow and ice control will start on the left there. You see we have our our power routes, we have eleven county power routes. We have on the right-hand map, we have six state routes, and they're split into depending on the highway. Like this, this one split between U. S. Highway sixty-three and this segment of Highway eight. We collect data on each one of those segments. At the back of your packet that I handed out, there are larger pictures of these plow routes if you want to look. On next slide. This is a look back here of the data we collect for year twenty-one. When I talk twenty twenty-one, it's January first to December thirty-first. So we collect everything from miles, hours, times, we collect it by road driver truck by highway. So we can analyze the data and see where it's going, who's a high user assault, how the winters going. Yeah, there's been chemicals put on the wrong highway that the wrong truck is taking it. You can track all that data. With that. We have eleven trucks right now that have GPS ABL on them. We have two more coming with our newer trucks. And our fleet and what GPS ABL does with our plow trucks that that is computerized to that. So it tells us when the plows are up, plows are down, how much material is going out there. So from our computer screens, we can watch a truck. You can see how fast they're going, which we have a citizen call in and say the guy went by at seventy miles an hour and took out all my mailboxes. We can go in there and see that he was going by the resident at thirty-five miles an hour plowing snow, and it was just heavy slush that took off his mailbox. So we can tell that with that and see that in lifetime. With that, it does material also. Then our trucks carry road sensors to tell the pavement temperature, because the temperature of the pavement is what makes salt work, not the air temperature. So it gives the guys an idea of what's working for them when we're getting close to freeze up, how they're going. They're not totally accurate, but with ice water, you can tell. If you're a couple of degrees off, at least you have an idea what's going on underneath there. So and then sand versus salt are county routes. We primarily run salt sand. We have a couple county routes that run straight salt, and that's County Road M, little higher volume traffic out of Osceola. And then the state is primarily all salt, except for when it's really cold and salt doesn't work once it gets below fifteen degrees, even with additives added to it. Once we get really cold temperatures, we'll switch to five percent to little get a little grit on the road. Makes the motoring public feel a little better on that one. Our next slide. This one here kind of tells you it's split between the state and county. It tells hours, drivers hours by the year. And it's going back to two thousand and seventeen. You can tell what months are our big months and which ones are our less months. You'll notice the one that'll always be higher right now and is on our slides here is March, excuse me, February of nineteen. I think that stretched there. We were out for thirty-five straight days, just never stopped. It seems to be familiar with this winter also. Next slide. On this slide, this is drivers by year again, total by the year. You can see where that goes, county and state. Next slide. This is truck miles, truck miles versus total on how far we've driven, plowing snow. And then on the right-hand side, it shows this split between the county and the state. You know, so when we look at, you can see how many miles we put on the state. So when we have overtime and that type of hours, typically around fifty-nine percent of our overtime is reimbursed by others that we do work for, primarily the state. So it really doesn't show on our budget lines that way, almost as we recruit through our state contract. And next slide, this shows now self-using. Over the same months, county on top, five percent, and then on the bottom is state, five percent. So you can tell as we spike up in these months here on the state system, you can tell those are cold winters. Primarily, the state is all assault. So in those cold times, that's when we're applying sand on the state roads to get through those. Next slide. These are cycle times. Now, these are the important ones we will look at. Now, remember on the state system, you combine two routes, three B and three A will be the same guy. So his total hours for that route. So in three B here is that little stub out of Frederick on forty-eight. So his cycle time on that is forty-five minutes down and back as as an average on that. So what's important on these, next slide. When you go to the county route, by hours, you start looking at the county route, and it should be a little longer. Remember, as you get to some of these that are three hours in cycle times, that means if it's only two hours, you're two inches an hour. By the time that guy gets back to that spot, there's six inches on the ground. So naturally, it looks like we didn't plow anything, and the phone calls come in and say, where's your trucks, or did you give up and go home, or whatever? We get a lot of different calls. On those, but those are the important ones. We kind of watched to see our cycle times are out. And we did take our, both county and state plow routes, and we put them through the state optimization software program. And what the state came back with was the only thing that they would change was moving a half-mile segment on U. S. Highway eight from the guy that plows Highway eight west of sixty-five to east of sixty-five. That was the only change they recommended. It really didn't work out for us for cycle times for coming up shop and turn around spots. So we did look at that. Next slide. This is cost per mile. Now we're getting into construction. So we do split this out kind of between chip seals and then our other processes paving and knowing that. Look through the years of what pavement cost. Chip seals are primarily materials, oil and rock, not as much labor hours. So you can see in twenty twenty-one, we were at about seventeen thousand, a little over seventeen thousand a mile. We did seventeen seventeen miles of work, so relatively low cost. Those that you are in towns that get bits for this projects are, you know, we're very efficient at what we do on these long ones, you know. In two thousand and nineteen, we had a spike in little costs. You can see that reflection there in the high cost. Next slide. This is cost per mile, chip seals and micro servicing. And you notice the line in there and how it spikes up and up and down in cost per mile. And a lot of that has to do with processes. So in seventeen, we're down to nineteen ninety-four thousand dollars a mile. We did fourteen miles. The reason for that is thin overlays. We 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 thinned it down, get more mileage is to bring our Pazer ratings up, because we just can't pulverize and pave and reconstruct our way out of bad roads. We have to use a whole bunch of different things on there. So that's why the variation is on there. So it's hard to find a trend line there, but it's all driven on process, whether we pulverized and paved. And these are just our county projects, not our federal projects. Next slide. This one shows our estimates, then after we give our our bids back and how the project came out. You notice in twenty twenty-one, our cost came under our estimates, and that is primarily due to kind of the foreman and the operation manager pushing the crews. You estimate at six days of paving and you'd have done it four. You know, so that works out very good, but that's kind of a trend line to show our estimating is coming back and forth each year. Next slide. This is the cost, who cost a mile with the chip seals for our project, kind of all on that. Cost pretty big to for spending. Next slide. This is the important one right here. This is the cost of our construction projects from year. And why this is consistent, you want to see that that those bar graphs are the same height or slightly higher, because that's going to reflect in our GTA or our general transportation aids that we're investing in our system. Now, our typical construction is about a hundred or one point nine million dollars. So we try to stay with that or be slightly above that. If I get an LRIP allocation of like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state for a project, I just can't lower that one point nine million dollars to offset that. I have to do one point nine million plus that hundred and fifty thousand, because your G that LRIP allocation actually goes as a being on your GTA's, because the state's invested in your system, not the county. That's why it's always important to keep the county level levies high. You can see in year twenty-one, we had some federal projects that we invested our twenty percent in, come up higher on that, bridge betterment, preparation for some of the roads that weren't in the other graphs. So to continue on that, we invest in that. And next slide. The key with the highway construction is is what I said was investing in that. We also use our the federal projects, our surface transportation rule and bridge, the bipartisan infrastructure legislation, local improvement, transportation program, and the HISIP is a highway safety improvement project. The GTA is, you know, we spend in our system that two million dollars in construction, but our total investment, our our total investment average with GTA's for the county, six years average, it's based off of what we spend. And right now, our current six-year average is ten million nine hundred and five thousand dollars and six hundred and eighty-one dollars. So that's including the investment the county made into our system, including the new highway facility, the equipment we buy, again, putting money into the roads and utilizing these other programs. So when I go for these projects, especially on these other ones, if we get a ten million dollar project, it's a six-year average. And or a better example was if we go to bond for highways, and you're going to give money for highways, you want to you want to put that money out in a five-year increments, so you don't have it all in one year. Because the first year is in there, it's going to develop really high. But in that seventh year, that's that money's going to drop off. It's going to drop your GTA allocation right off the bat. So you kind of average that out to make it. So next slide. You know, that's kind of it. And what I went with on this, you know, we collect a lot of data at highway, and we go through that stuff to try to keep the system up and running, keep our Pazer levels at an eight or a seven out of ten. So it's an ongoing process with that. Any questions?
Yeah. Well, that you said the level seven out of ten. What was that level?
It's called a Pazer rating. It's a rating we for the state every two years. I I do it every year just to keep our system up, and it's a payment evaluation system that the state uses to define our roadways.
You signed the Pazer rating for all the townships, too?
No, I do not. The towns, their individual Pazer ratings unless they ask me to.
And then I thought they turned them into you and then.
They go directly to the state.
Oh, okay.
We manage, we manage the LRIP program for the towns and help with the documentation and make sure they get their allocations for those.
Is Highway sixty-three or sixty-five to state project, is that still set for just twenty-three?
Yes. That is. Right now, it's all for advertisement and bidding.
So it it hasn't been actually the bid let out yet?
It's it's due back. It's advertised right now. So we haven't got, I haven't seen the bids.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Have you, is this the kind of data you've been collecting and reviewing for years?
Yes.
Or, okay. You, what do you, what do you take from the, what's the biggest trend that you've taken from this, or what's the biggest takeaway you've taken from this data here this year?
On the biggest takeaway, the biggest challenge is the the cost of materials.
Yeah.
And trying to balance the program, not to shortside a project, but keep the system up and running and try to keep our miles going. So as we switch from, the data shows that as as costs or costs are rising, our mileages are going slightly down. So it's the preventive maintenance, the crack sealing, and trying to get up on the maintenance to extend the life of those roads.
So next year at this time, when we see this graph, are we gonna see some kind of big spike or some kind of outlier looking thing because of costs?
Uh, no, no, I, again, I try to manage that way, looking more at a mill and fill to get us fifteen years out versus a twenty-year road. If I continue, if I did it consistently with like with a grind and pave or a pulverize and pave, reconstruct, you'd see that drastic spike, and you'd see a lot less miles done.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Thank you for doing what you've been doing this last couple weeks. Really appreciate it. Been thinking a lot about you guys.
Thank you, Mo.
Please pass our appreciation on.
Should we be called out on Christmas?
Yeah. Yep.
That's the thing that's so hard about Mo's job is a lot of young people working for him. They got kids. They don't spend Christmas morning with their families. So that's what makes it hard for plowed out, plowed out, there's some workers.
And all ours, too. I went to St. Croix Falls to thank them, and they said it was all Red Bull.
Yeah, we gotta thank some of those employees too somehow. Sheriff's Department has similar situation, Christmas morning, Christmas day. Okay, thanks, Mo.
Thanks, Mo.
Number ten confirmation by chair. There are none that I'm aware of. So we will speed right on to eleven. Back to the administrator and see what he's got.
I do have one appointment for the housing authorities, who director by Jennifer Cockroft, but they're asking for Erin Carlson to be appointed. That's E. R. I. N. Background in social work, very active in her earlier years dealing with helping children nursing homes, a lot of different things. So she's got a lot of experience. So she volunteered, wanted to be on the housing authority.
I move for approval.
I agree.
More questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I pose same sign.
Make comment to that, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead and make a comment, Ron.
I'm the county rep on the housing, county housing authority. And there's a lot of talking, a lot of work being done, surveys and everything else, and trying to get more housing in the county. And I should say we've asked Jennifer, is there anything in the future down the line, anything to any more full county housing units in the county? And it said absolutely not. Legislature doesn't have any vision on that expanding in the county whatsoever. Really disappointed on that. Comments?
Anybody else? Okay. I really don't have anything to report. I mean, everything that we've been doing is pretty much been discussed already, so there's not much to any special meetings. There will be something coming up in the future for more information that might be interesting. However, at this juncture, nothing, except I do want to make a note that the February meeting has been canceled, and you've got a list of the ones that are are still open, because the the committees have the the prerogative in order to cancel their own meetings and or run them at at whatever wish they have. But the county board has been canceled, as you can see, as have some other others already been canceled. So watch it close to make sure you are up here alone. Okay?
Also, Mr. Chair, Health and Human Services was not on here, but that is also canceled.
That was canceled. I knew that, but I.
Okay, these other ones were new.
I didn't see it on there either.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't think they got all the cancellations. So Public Safety, Public Works, Executive and General Government, along with Health and Human Services have been canceled in February. Environmental Services is pulling the weight next month by having two meetings. They will continue.
So that I say, watch for what meetings in check to see if they are still going forward or not. And that brings us to the administrator's report.
Thank you. Several items here. First of all, health officer update, the county has hired Helen Swanson. Now Helen has been our interim health officer. The caveat to that is she is still getting some graduate level courses to fulfill the obligation for be the health officer. So at this point, Tanya will remain our health officer from from a oversight perspective, but of course, she'll be delegating a lot to Helen as she performs the duties and then continues to get her education. I think she has two years to complete that. So very happy. Helen has done an outstanding job over the past several months. Very happy she took that position, and of course, happy that Tanya is able to, with her expertise and and professional credentials, she's able to be our health officer at the level that we want. Also, while I'm on the topic of Tanya, she is the WCA County Ambassador for Pope County. I know Mr. Bonner Prize works with them closely, but we also sent a staff person this year, and she will be going on the twenty-fifth to Madison to lobby for Pope County and really for the Wisconsin County Association. And a couple of topics that she covers. One, Mo just mentioned general transportation aids. One of the topics will be, how can we get the state to give us more money so that instead of shrinking the number of miles we cover, we can continue to do the roads that need to be done? Will be really the theme of it is, I think, increasing local government funding. The surplus at the state level continues to grow. We are having and yet mandated projects continue to grow as well from the state. So we'll be looking at a way to and suggesting ways to allow local governments to have more money, including, I think, messing with the sales tax amount that we get up that is all collective. There's also lobbying effort with the victim witness reimbursement for more money and more services, especially when it comes to children that are involved in crimes to make sure they have the services and the compensation that they need, and then also mental health services. We know that's a a growing need everywhere, and and it's certainly here in Pope County, and and we want to increase funding and and attention to that. So thank Tanya for doing that. She's taken time out of her jobs here, and I know she'll go down and make that worthwhile. Okay, next topic, Environmental Services Division will be conducting a zebra muscle webinar. As you know, zebra muscles have been found in several lakes here in the county, and they can spread, and this seminar is going to cover a lot of topics in terms of just educational, about what's the impact? How can we sanitize our boats and equipment so that we don't spread it, the value of of not spreading it and management options and research options, those types of things. The date for that will be February second at eight forty-five in the morning. It's a webinar. If you go on to our website, if you go to social media for environmental services, it's, we're going to have a press release and put it in the paper. Lake districts are all involved, rehabilitation districts involved. Organizations know about it. They'll be getting the word out as well. But if anybody has questions or interest in that topic, they can certainly participate in that webinar. You'll see that February second. Uh oh, I'm really happy to announce that uh Chabana Lund Dean has established residency. And as of last week was sworn into the role of county clerk. And so she is official down here. Um and.
Does that make her an elected official? We can't tell her what to do anymore? Just wondering.
Okay, uh there is another round of PSC broadband grants coming out now. Uh to put it in perspective, I think it's fourteen million dollars at the PSC at the state level. Will divvy out to internet service providers as they apply for these grants. Last time it was like a hundred and eleven. So it's a fewer fewer dollars, fewer places selected. But I was very happy to see that and and I don't have all the details yet, but all three of our local ones, uh Lakeland, Amory, Tell. And uh Starwire are have informed me that they are putting together grants and asked us the county to support them with a letter. That type of thing. So that is good news and and our strategy of of supporting them and then. Trying to begin filling in those areas of most need, uh you know, is is continuing to move in the right direction. So I think that's good news. And we'll continue to work with them moving forward. UW Extension, happy to tell if you have not met him yet. Kristen Bruder has moved to another district and she has been replaced by Mr. Tim Scutley. Who is uh not on the agenda, but he's back there in the corner waving at people. And he's working as a way around to meet people in the uh on the staff. And I know that he wanted to meet some of you tonight. Think tomorrow he'll be in Environmental Services. So it'll be good to have him have him there.
What did you do?
Tim Scutley, S K U T L E Y, I believe. And uh yeah, so he's been meeting with us. We're going to be talking about how we can work together here going forward. I think that's all I have.
Oh, that's enough. Thank you.
I asked you a question.
Yes.
Two things, how is general staffing looking and uh what's happening with the planner?
Oh, excellent. Uh general staffing, like everybody, we have openings. We try to fill them. And and I can tell you, we've had some great wins of late. Uh in particular, you know, uh Mo's operations manager. Who became the highway commissioner. We have backfilled that with a person here uh in the uh in the county. So very happy for that. Um. Reese.
Justin.
Justin Reese. Yeah. Let's see, HR Director have not backfilled yet, but we uh have a second round of interviews coming up this week. I believe. So we've got, you know, movie making progress there. What was the other one?
Planner.
Planner. We have Bob Kazmierski, who is a planner, but he is filling in. But we have plans to begin that search. We have some a strategy in mind. We think we'll in April, May, we'll start posting. And have that this summer.
Anybody else? Okay, supervisors' reports. If any. Uh go ahead. First, Brian.
Okay, um one, I met with uh Village of Milton, just to kind of introduce that. Housing is being talked about at the highest possible level. And they shared some. Upcoming plans from new businesses and some existing folks that are talking about. Being interested in developing housing themselves or uh the village itself being open to talks about. You know, what might happen with the county and how they can work with the county to make something happen over there. So Milton was receptive. Wilson Lake hasn't uh. About it yet. And then the other thing was, everybody's familiar with the sports complex. Um conversation that got sent over to EDC. Uh when that happened, EDC created its own committee with some community stakeholders and they've been taking that. Feasibility study that we all got presented to us from the consulting firm. I think it's out of Florida. Um and just seeing if and what next step should be taken. And basically where that is right now is. Uh survey just went out, a community survey. It's available on the EDC website if anybody wants to take it themselves. Or passing around to people, uh just collecting general feedback from the community. Um it's got very high level questions just about user interest or things like that, just to gauge general. The general temperature of people in the county. Um it's not scientific or anything. It just goes out to as many people as can get it. And they'll take whatever feedback they can get. Any and all opinions are are welcome.
Brian, is that the same on this on the county website?
Is it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for bringing that up. It is on the county website as well.
Okay, perfect. And then so basically where that is now is. If that committee finds that there's, you know, enough interest within the community for it to be something to pursue. Then the next steps would be phase two of the um feasibility study, which we, you know, we all went through phase one. But whether or not that type of facility could be supported in this area. And then phase two would be more about the operations of it. How many jobs it would require or bring in the costs and everything of upkeeping the place. And then another one is thanks to some community stakeholders from Osceola Medical Center that have been through this type of process before. Um they highly recommend going through a financial feasibility or fundraising feasibility. And just basically seeing how many dollars are available in this area, where they would come from. Um. Yeah, so that's where things are at right now. So if anybody wants to toss that survey around. That would be great.
That survey is closing down on the end of the month, correct?
Yep, good point.
Okay, anybody else? John, did you say you had something?
Mr. Chair, you're going to represent Polk County on the Wisconsin Highway.
I'll be there.
Mr. Chair, building on what Ryan said, um there's, we've been talking about housing a lot and and Health and Human Services. And um we, there's four of us so far on the committee, pick four, are going to go to Chippewa Falls and look at their housing. And so if anyone is interested in joining us, um I guess, let me know or get to Vince and then we will post it. Through the clerk's office in case there's a form forum. It's like a field trip, probably a half a day or so.
To that topic, Momentum West is having a seminar on the twenty-fifth and they're and actually one of the presenters will be the Little House. Uh folks.
Momentum, what is it? From St. Croix?
Momentum West is Wisconsin EDC. Yeah.
The the development that's being built.
Yes, she's going to present the concept to them, but you know, they've got like four, five, six topics.
Okay. I met with her today and she was talking about that very presentation.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
If you care of your nothing else, I'll move to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn.
Second.
Need second that one. All in favor?
That's the most meeting in years.